Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next will be roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
President.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matamoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Present.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. So, next is the public comment. Oh, late changes to the agenda, do we have any?
We don't, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we'll wait to see if anyone signed up for public comment.
We have Ryan and Hillary Abbott, and you'll have five minutes at the podium.
Hello. My name's Ryan, this is my wife Hillary. We just wrote some, a few thoughts down, so I'll just read it off. I would like to propose a change to the building codes that mention assessed building value or assessed value. I have the three references for codes, 15 dot 05 dot 050, and then two others. The text reads additions, alterations, improvements, and repairs exceeding 50% of the assessed building value as determined at the beginning of the five-year period shall comply with the requirements for new buildings. The reason I would like to propose this change is because many of the homes in Mount Lake Terrace are assessed well below market or replacement value. For example, the assessed value of our home at 23107 52nd Avenue is $54,800. A much more realistic valuation would be at least three times this amount. The implications of this are that if you decide to update your home or make needed safety repairs, you can immediately exceed the 50% threshold and are now required to bring up the entire structure to current structural and safety requirements. This process can be prohibitively expensive and involved and not something that many people can afford. Our home ended up needing mold remediation, new plumbing, and electrical for safety reasons. The remodeling involved put us over the threshold, given the low assessed value of our house. I know there are many others in the community like us that are being forced to either forego necessary updates to their homes or undergo a massive investment that is financially burdensome. For the 50% rule, I would propose using an apples-to-apples comparison for the calculation as opposed to an apples-to-oranges comparison. This would mean changing the wording from assessed value to something like market value or replacement value. The city of Seattle uses replacement value in their building code language for determining substantial remodels. I think the proposed change would be a much fairer implementation of the rule for everyone and would give many people more freedom to make needed safety and quality of life updates to their homes, which benefits the community as a whole. Yeah, any questions or clarifications? I've never done this before, so.
Oh, and we can't respond?
You can't respond?
No.
Okay, thank you.
However...
I'd like to request something of the city manager's staff if they could get the Abbott's contact information.
So, there's an email, printed-out email in front of each of you that contains that information, and we can take a look, I'd be happy to contact them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have a question, Councilmember Woodard?
I did, thank you, Mayor. While we have our residents here, thank you for joining us, by the way, and voicing your concerns. I remember when this conversation came up, we spent a lot of time around this, and my recollection was, safety matters wouldn't be part of that threshold number. And I don't know if you were even on staff at that time, so I kind of wanted to remind us about that conversation. That was a very memorable conversation, but like I said, I feel like the issues concerning that were raised here, we did try to address in that same policy. So, that you wouldn't be, hmm, should I replace my water heater? Or do I have to upgrade everything? So, just kind of putting that out there.
Normally with a public comment, you come and then you say what you have to say, and then we will get back to you later if something needs to get done. But I can answer part of this one, and I'm going to talk to the city manager. I'm sorry, sorry. I thought we changed the part of that so that maintenance items like a new roof and so forth are not part of that 50%.
So, I don't believe that I was on staff when this conversation took place, but I will go back and take a look and make sure that the code reflects what was the council's desire at that time.
Because this has come up in the past, and I think like landscaping and a new roof, I remember that because that is maintenance and so forth.
Yeah, I will definitely look into it.
All right, Councilmember Woodard.
I'm going to tease a little bit here and say, thank you, Mayor, for Mayor explaining me. I'm apparently not very good with my words, that's exactly what I was trying to say, so thank you.
Okay. Are there anyone else?
No one else has signed up in person, no one is registered to comment online, and written comments have been handed out to council.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
It was 2021, I was just, last time we looked at some of the building codes, so if you want to see some of the background information... Probably not supposed to, but if you go to our minutes and you type in search for assessed values or building code in September of 2021, you can find some of the background story there too, so at least you'd have some answers to look at tonight.
Okay, anyone else? Normally, we don't do this. But sometimes I like to get things taken care of when we know the answers to it. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve items A and B on the consent calendar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next is the presentation on the proposed 2025-2026 biennial budget by departments. Special revenues department. With, and I'm not, I'm just going to use first name on this one, Serke.
Yeah. Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. I'm Serke Solminen, and we're going to discuss the special revenue funds. Can you all hear me? Okay. Let me pull up, my first time pulling up the presentations.
Sometimes you have to talk right into the microphone.
How's that? Is that good? Okay, I got it. All right, special revenue funds. Those are funds that are restricted in use. The funds are restricted, they come from, they can come from taxes, they can come from a transfer from other funds. They're restricted by, sometimes by law, sometimes by council, sometimes by just, just, sometimes it's just reserved for emergencies. So, we're going to go over all the special revenue funds that the city has. So, here's a list of them, and we will go through every single one, I promise we won't be here till midnight. Okay, strategic reserve fund. That is, that is like a savings account. That is meant for if there's a natural or economic disaster, we want to have funds available just in case. Council does approve these during the budget to go into the strategic reserve fund. Our target is 5% of the expenditures every year. We are, this year, we should be at 5%, and in '25 and '26, we'll be a little bit below 5%, and then moving on to '27 and onwards, will, our target is 5%, and we will be hitting that target.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had talked about the need to increase, was it the strategic reserve fund or just the regular reserve fund?
Both. I would like eventually to see a minimum of three months' operating expenses, which is roughly 20. We're not going to get there anytime in the near term, but that's the goal.
Okay, so that, instead of 5%, that needs to be, what percent do we need to get to? Three months?
Best practices from GFOA, I believe, are 20, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's around there, it's pretty close, 15 to 20%.
Yeah. And that's for combined strategic reserve and reserve, and there's like, we have three kind of reserve-type funds?
Yeah, those two are the main ones, the strategic reserve and then the reserve make up right now 5%.
Each?
No, 5% total. And I would like to get to a point where we are at minimum 15, but closer to 20 if we can do it.
Okay, and so that's not budgeted?
No.
In this budget? What process do we need to look at for getting us to that target amount? Because I think, I would certainly agree that that is necessary, and I know that's something that I think the council would be concerned about, and based on our financial policies, we've, we're all pretty much there, I would say, that that is the right direction where we need to be, how do we get there?
So, at this point, that's one of the things that we want to talk to the task force about, but also it's either reducing services or increasing revenues. I mean, those are the two options.
And economic development?
And, well, and economic development can help, but I don't think it's going to increase it to 15% anytime soon.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Can I just ask the obvious question? Why aren't we following the finance policy on making sure that we, I know this is just our reserve fund?
We, this year, we are at, let me just tell you, we're at 5.3%.
And you said next year and the year after, we're not going to be?
And in '25 and '26, we're just below, we're at 4.6 and 4.7. And then from there, we'll be at 5% and 5.1%. We'll be looking at our financial policies next year and reviewing them.
But we reviewed them in 2018, approved them again in 2024. If you're going to review them, I'd have you go back to at least 2010, when we had our other financial policies, and because I don't know why they were, I don't remember at the moment why they were changed in 2018, but, so, my original, why are we at 4.6 and 4.7? Since it's just like a couple of, why can't we just do the 5%?
Yeah, understandable. Usually, these are, that's our goal, that is always our goal, and we have to try to reach that, and sometimes we don't. And especially if we pull out, I don't think that there have been any expenditures out of the account right now, but sometimes that happens. You have to pull quite a bit of money out for the, for whatever emergency came up, and then you have to continually, over the years, add to it, supplement it. So, it is a target, it's a goal, and we always try to reach it.
And it's pretty foreseeable, we will probably have something that's unexpected, so...
Yeah, I mean, the pandemic was a really good example, where we could have had to expend some of that money. I know other cities have.
But where is that other 3%, the 0.3 going? I still don't understand why we just can't have 5.
Because when, it's every year we look at it, what our expenditures are, and then it's a percentage of that year. So, it happens to be that throughout this budget process that we are spending more, we're needing more money in other areas, and so that's going to fluctuate, that requirement is going to fluctuate every single year, depending on our expenditures.
But it shouldn't, because we have that financial policy in place for a purpose, and even if we're going down to that, in 2027, we should at least make that up. So, that would be my recommendation, at least try and follow the finance policies.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, if I'm looking, if I'm reading the numbers correctly, that 0.3% is $78,000 and $72,000?
Correct.
So, that's, if we wanted to get to the 5%, that's what we'd have to make up?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
And you had mentioned it may fluctuate, so, okay, if it's down, say, 0.3%, then we have to make it up in future budgets. Does this reflect that?
So, every year is going to be a different amount, because it's just always dependent on our expenditures. So, next year, there might be a, there will be a different budget, or in '27, there will be a different budget, different expenditures, and at that point, it can be, we're not taking out of this fund at that, right now, so it could be 5.7 in there, it could be 6. It just depends, if our expenditures go down, then that is going to be a different amount. Does that kind of make sense?
Well, I guess, I think what you're saying is, it's not that we're making it up, it's just that it's a 5%. We get back to the 5% as of '27, that's what is projected in future budgets at 5%?
Correct. It's always dependent on the expenditures, and then we try to put money in there, every budget cycle, we try to put money in there to sustain that 5%.
Can I just ask one more?
And we don't have it in there now.
Okay, thank you.
If you look at, in '26, we will be transferring from the general fund $6,400, and then from there, it goes up to get to that 5%, and that 5% is always a target for us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
And the reason I'm pushing this, especially for the reserve fund, it's a one-time money, and we're drawing down on our reserves for our operating deficit, so how can you forecast '27 is going to be better when we're going to be in the red?
The, we're... Yeah, I, we don't, we can certainly look at that.
Oh. Look at what?
We can certainly look at this fund again, if you would like.
Sure. I'm just wondering, because some of our budget, you know, we were told in June that our budget was bad, and that we're going to have to make some really hard choices, and this is what we've been talking about, looking at some really hard choices. And I was just telling Brian, I'd really like to look at that finance committee a little bit differently. I looked at Ken Moore's, they had one in 2020, and they're two, I believe they're $2 million behind, and now they have one in 2024, and other cities have used their finance committee, and we would have to pay $25,000 for this committee, if not more, and it could take up to 12 months, and it'd be a one-time thing, but if we looked at our own finance committee, which we haven't been using, we can invite the public, we could have public maybe restructure and be on the board, we wouldn't have to hire an expert, because we have you now to run that meeting, and we wouldn't have to have somebody else come in, because each department should be understanding what, where they should be looking at, and I'm hoping that's what we're going to be doing, is how each department is going to be looking at cuts. And the reason I bring it up is because our budget is based on our council goals, and we're missing one very prominent goal from our council goals, and I just don't want it, because what's happening is coming back on the council right now to make these decisions, and we know that we're already in trouble, and if we don't start looking at it very closely, we're going to be in big trouble, and we're going to be bleeding money.
Councilmembers, we're happy to take another look at this. As you know, we've been in a bit of a transition this summer, so we have a consultant expert who we would like to consult about this fund, and we can get you some answers about whether we should move some more general fund money in here to right-size the ship, or if there's a good reason not to.
All right, I don't see anyone else. Go ahead.
Okay, contingency fund. So, this is what I call a rainy day fund, it actually is called a rainy day fund, and this is another reserve fund. This is mainly for if we have any major operational changes throughout the year, things like if in the middle of winter, our heating system goes down, and we did not budget for something like that, then we would pull it out of this fund. This is the one that has a 2% target, and as you can see, I believe it shows on the bottom, we are at 2% every single year, I think next year is at 2.1%, but we are adding to this fund every year also to make sure it stays at 2%. And again, we'll be looking at the financial policies next year to increase, increase the fund balance. Okay, this is the debt service fund, this is a general obligation debt. We have the voted bond for, it's the UTGO, unlimited tax general obligation bond, and it is for City Hall, and that was voted in 2017. It's a 30-year bond, so in 2047, it will be paid off. The, just so people understand, the UTGO, it's unlimited, that means it's unlimited in rate and also the amount of it, and it is voter-approved. The other one, we have, I'm just, where it says transfer from street construction, that is a brand-new loan, I believe it's a washout loan, and it is for water, storm, and a street project. There actually should be, we need to change this, there should be also an expenditure. There's a transfer coming into this fund, but there's also a payment going out, so we will change that. And this fund is restricted completely for debt service. Okay, REIT fund, real estate excise tax. This is where cities can levy a real estate tax, it's a quarter percent, and you can do that twice, two different quarter percent taxes on all sales of real estate. And this fund is restricted for capital projects and also for maintenance of the capital assets. We do, normally, this fund is definitely used for capital projects. We have a half a million going out to street projects and half a million to other capital projects, I believe probably in Public Works. So, accumulated leave. We have employees that at times retire, we don't... Oh, that's...
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Running back to the REIT fund. There was a big expenditure in '23. We had a large balance, fund balance, and then a fairly large expenditure on street construction, transferred to the street construction fund in '23, which then brings us back to where this, I'm assuming is kind of the normal line of roughly 600,000, 700,000. Are you able to, I'm sure you probably don't know off the top of your head, so I'll ask you to maybe dig into, find some information as to what that was?
Yeah, I have that answer.
You do?
The 4.2 is dedicated to the right-of-way acquisition for Main Street. So, it's actually, it was authorized in 2023 budget, and we're in the middle of spending that.
And the reason, so, in other words, we had let the REIT fund balance build up for that purpose, because we knew we were going to do that years ago, and so we had let, we allowed the REIT funds to build up in the account to be able to use specifically for the right-of-way acquisition in '23?
I assume that is the case, yes.
All right, so that helps explain why that number was larger and with the big expenditure then. So, what we're looking at is normal REIT revenues per year are roughly six, a growing percent, I'm assuming, but roughly $600,000 in real estate sales that bring in the revenues for that fund. And then, when we see a good year in real estate sales, that's when we start to see some additional, that fund build up a little higher, we're able to use for other capital purposes.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and we're very conservative with those. Apartment complexes sell in that time, and I don't think they'll, we'll continue to resell all of these apartment complexes over and over again. It'd be nice.
It'd be nice.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important for us to maintain a baseline of what we know, I mean, I think that's what we're doing here, right? We're maintaining a baseline of what we know is kind of the bottom expected, kind of a bottom line expected, and then if we have a good year, where we have a big sale or a lot of sales, and we have a lot of extra revenue, then that's great, and then we can utilize those funds when we have them in the bank, but we can't budget for that unless we know we've got it in the bank, and so the best way to budget for the REIT fund is based on kind of that minimum baseline.
Yes, yeah. I believe that this number was calculated by using the average of the last 10 years and not planning for any of the major developments that we expect to pay REIT in the next year, because we always, you know, we can't predict for sure that that will happen, but we are hoping a couple of the big projects will pay in to REIT in the following year.
They should, yes. Quoting Councilmember Payne Donovan, they should, yes. Thank you.
And I think another thing is, we have the light rail right now, that there might be more people that are moving in, selling, moving in, so that was kind of the idea of keeping a little bit of an increase going in the future years, but that's a pretty conservative estimate right now, for the $500,000 this coming two years. Okay, accumulated leave. We have started this fund for any retirements that are coming up. We have accrued leave that by law, we have to pay out, and so it's nice to have another fund for it, so it's not, sometimes it's unexpected, sometimes we know and we can budget for it, and that's what we've budgeted for 2025, because we do know that we have some retirements coming up and have to pay out leave, so...
Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is not a new fund, this is something that we've had, set aside, designated for, it looks like for at least a few years. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. And then, but we are expecting some retirements in '25 and that's why we're, the expenditure is 46.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So then we have the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And council has approved all of the allocations. And this year, we need to obligate the rest of the funds for whatever we have not spent or projects that have not been finished. And in 2026, we have to have spent all the money. So at the end of this year, we have to obligate it. And in the next two years, we do have to spend it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry. And so the reason there's zero, I mean, we have an ending fund balance of $1.5 million from this year, right? The revised ending fund balance, we expect by the end of this year. And then we have no expenditures. Is that because that $1.5 has been transferred to other areas of the budget that's going to actually be spent that we're, that's budgeted somewhere else and shows, do we not need to make, show somewhere in here a transfer out to show that we have a zero balance?
There is a zero balance at the end of this year in the yellow.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Sorry, I was just looking at the bottom, bottom line on that page. Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, the next fund is the solid waste fund. We receive an administrative fee as a revenue from our waste taller. And some of that funding is used to help pay for people who have, who are low income and need support in paying their solid waste bill. So when they get that support, it comes out of this fund. So you'll see revenues coming in and then the expenditures are to support those folks who have hardship and need support paying their bills. And we also have a small amount of money allocated to support some code compliance-related issues related to sort of garbage in the yard and things like that.
Mayor Prokan. Are you on solid waste?
Yeah, no, I was, I was looking at, thinking of, okay, this is a fund to help assist those that require or are in need assistance. It made me think back to when we were doing our, the South County Fire and we set aside X amount of dollars to be able to assist customers. Is that indicated in here or is that somewhere else in the budget? Where, where am I going to be looking for those, that kind of that set aside that we created to help assist those in need?
Is that for fire-related costs?
Was it utilities or what was it?
So I think I can help clarify this. And I don't think we ever really closed the loop on, on that conversation. I think, as I recall, we may have in the balance that was, that the city funds that were used to buy down the, whatever the, the cost of doing, of moving into the district. We did, as I recall, sort of adjust down the, that, that number with an intent perhaps to go revisit it so that we could provide some utility assistance. But, but I'm not sure that we've ever sort of picked that conversation back up.
Basically, what it did is maintain it, right, we bought down X amount based on how much we knew was going to be used for the fire. We set aside, we subtracted out $50,000, I think, or something like that for assistance. But that was in general fund dollars. That would be general fund dollars from the property tax that we then wanted to make, utilize for assistance. I guess the question is, maybe we need to loop back around on that one. But if that's been, has that been allocated somewhere or is that being, is this where I want to look for that?
No, that, this is just for solid waste and it comes from waste management. But there, I think what you're referring to is a utility discount fund. There were $50,000 set aside from the RFA and that was allocated to the utility funds. So if someone gets a discount, you know, they normally would be paying into the utility fund, so that's where the money was allocated to cover those costs.
Okay, and so that's going to, that, we can find that line item somewhere or how do we?
It wouldn't be at this level of detail, but we can find that for you.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I think we'd all be interested in seeing where those dollars are landing and how they're being utilized and how, and the use as to how many people are actually utilizing that would be helpful information.
Do the people out there know that this is available?
We do have information on our website and the welcome kit that we send out to everyone about the ability to apply for low-income support for their utilities.
Yeah, appreciate any additional information we can get on that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it on solid waste. For the lodging tax, hotel motel fund. So as we alluded to in a previous meeting, we proposed to increase the amount allocated to grants to $50,000 a year. And the reason for that is we've been collecting about $55,000 a year and we've been relatively stagnant in the amount that we've put towards the grant at about $25,000 a year. So we had, we did advertise that. That does not mean that the council has to approve that budget. So if council decides to go a different way with the allocation to the grant fund, certainly the LTAC committee can restrict the amount of funds that they give to applicants. But since we have advertised for the applications for LTAC, we've received five new inquiries from organizations that haven't applied in the past. So I just wanted to let you know that. And also, the city is allowed to apply for funding through this fund, but has to submit an application like anyone else would and it would be reviewed by the committee.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Can I just ask why the council wasn't consulted or the committee wasn't consulted and it just kind of just went out there?
Well, the place to do that is in the budget process and we were out of sync with our LTAC processes here, so, yeah.
We were out of sync because I've been on that committee, like I told you, maybe 15 years now. And the reason why we haven't updated is because nobody else wanted it. And we wanted to talk about different ways of using it and we just haven't been given that option.
Well, like I said, council doesn't have to approve the $50,000, so...
Well, the, the committee doesn't have to use it all, but the council could oversee that and say, no, we want to do this or that. You take our recommendations. But it's just one of those things that would be nice just to be consulted on stuff like that because it just kind of negates what council's for.
Council, Mayor Prokan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would agree that it would have been good, I understand, I think, I understand what you're saying is the cycle was, we needed to announce to the public that these funds are available and we need to get your applications in. I think that the disconnect maybe that Councilmember Son was referring to is that, that, because there was the increase, we should have just had a discussion before the announcement was made. But I agree that we should be doing it. I mean, I think that we're bringing in these funds. If everybody looks at the ending fund balance in the lodging tax, it's 250,000 and growing. And there's a lot of money in there and I have a lot of exciting ideas that we've, and we all have a lot of exciting ideas for what we'd like to be seeing as far as events in this community. And so I'm thrilled that we are increasing it. And so I would like to see us maintain that $50,000 and even be considering, you know, how, even there's maybe some special events like, say, a night market, just throwing it out there, that we might want to consider. We've got some extra funds in there. I know it's the first time, but, but anyway, I mean, I, we have some additional funding for events and I'd love to see us be utilizing that. And so I, I do support the increase. I think we could have worked through that process better, but, but I'm glad that we're considering it and support it in the budget. Thank you.
It just puts the committee at a vulnerable state because you have to prove that people are actually coming here. And even for the, you know, Rick looked over, so I'm going to call on, for the arts, you know, I've been doing it so long that, you know, I talked to the committee and we talk about who stays, but when we have new people apply, they're kind of surprised. Sometimes they're like, oh, when we say, well, we're only going to give you this much or that much. And, but the big thing that we've always talked about lodging tax is we want to see what else you've applied for and what, have you gone to Snohomish County? Have you looked at other things? And over the years, we've had different spreadsheets of how we rank each one. And it's been a big ordeal over the years and it's hard to tell somebody no and it's hard to, for them, if it's a brand-new event, for them to prove that they're going to bring in lodging.
All right. The next fund is the housing needs fund. So there is funding in here for two main purposes. One is we participate in an inter-jurisdictional housing program through Snohomish County tomorrow to help local governments plan for well-designed, affordable housing in appropriate locations. So there is funding every year that goes to that program. And then we have funding for our own rental housing business license and inspection program. And that is run through our community and economic development department.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Prokan.
Guy to your left, just, thank you, Madam Mayor. What, and maybe this is a topic for, I think we've actually been talking about having a session on this and maybe a work session to really understand what the fund does, what we're getting out of it and how we might be able to better utilize it to address some of our affordable housing needs. And I'd like to, so I guess, thank you for the budget. Let's have a discussion at some point about the use of this budget, how to utilize this budget and how to take, take advantage of the funds that we have available to help us address some of the challenges that we're facing out there with affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. All right, the art fund. This is, basically, this is our 1% for the art funds, but we have not had a separate fund or account for it in the past. It was mixed with our general fund, which makes it really hard from an accounting perspective to track. And it's important that we are able to clearly identify the 1% fund because it is required by ordinance. And so we want to make sure we understand how those funds are being expended and to track it properly. So up to now, it's been in the general fund mixed with recreation and we have someone who has a great spreadsheet. So we would rather be able to pull a report out of Munis and show everyone who asks where that funding is. So this is the first step in starting the art fund and we have a balance right now of about $46,000 after we pay for the artwork at the plaza.
All right, Mayor Prokan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am thrilled that we're creating this new fund and, and, because I think it's important and what I, so I think this, this is a great first step. I think the next step is then working with the Arts Commission and figuring out how we can do more for the arts and kind of put together a vision and a dream of what we want to achieve with public art in our community and, and identify, and I guess, in addition to the 1%, because it's, based on what we see here, it's very static. There's obviously going to be some buildings, for instance, the Rec Pavilion, when we do that, that'll be a big chunk of 1% that will help fund this. But there might be some one-time expenditures we want to make from the general fund into the, when we have some money, but I, maybe that's part of the discussion next year with the, with how financial picture in general. But I'd like us to spend some time looking, dreaming about what we want to accomplish and what we want to, who we want to be in placemaking in Mallick Terrace and utilize this art fund to help us achieve those dreams. And, and so for some of that may be some one-time funding from the general fund to help provide some additional seed money. Other, maybe there's some other things we can be doing to look at how we can get, how we can help provide additional seed funds into this, this art fund to be, for instance, donations or whatever. I just think we're spending some time and putting together some group thinking, maybe with the Arts Commission and others that might be interested in doing that to help us be able to really be the most we can be. Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Can any of this money be used then to fix some of the art we have?
Yes, I believe so. I can look at the ordinance, but typically you can use 1% funding for that.
Because our sculpture out here is starting to rust and we also have Mother Justice. And if I hear somebody else knock that, I'm going to be mad because we have a beautiful piece of bronze and maybe we won't talk about one piece of it, but we knew the person who created it and it really should be on display instead of stuck like on the side of the police station. So that's why I'm asking if we can use some of that. And I think I already talked to Rick about that. He was going to bring it to the Arts Commission to see what they wanted to do. Because I know, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Rick.
Regarding Mother Justice, that statue is going to be placed after the pathway in the park that goes to the transit station. It's going to be, once that's taken care of and there's a place already that's supposed to be going down the path or something by the police station for that statue to be.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, it'd be nice to get a, the other thing is an estimated value on that because it was created such a long time ago and it was before the bronze was really unpure. And so it could be quite an expensive piece of work. So it would be nice, we've talked about it on arts too, to get some estimates on some of our artwork.
Okay. Great, so we are on the tree fund. This is a new fund and is based on the ordinance that you adopted in 2023 with the new tree regulations. We would receive mitigation money potentially from developers or property owners who have to take down a tree and can't replace them on site and use that to plant trees throughout the city or to hire an arborist to help support planning or assessment of trees and to provide support for our new urban forest plan that we're in the middle of developing.
Can I ask a question on this? Oh, I didn't see you. This was always there, right? You were just putting in the money into a tree fund now, but it was always in, or is that the same question you had?
This is a new fund.
It's a new fund. So we took the $20,000 from?
The $20,000 is a projected revenue from in-lu payments that will occur.
Go ahead, Mayor Prokan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm assuming that we have no, no real numbers populating this fund. I mean, I appreciate that we created this fund. I think it was, is a good idea that we did it based on the fact that we created the program and, and now have in-lu fees and so there's a clear way to track it. But I'm assuming we haven't populated the numbers because we have no idea. Based on, we have no history, we have no way of knowing what it's going to be. And so we start with this and we're going to see how it goes over the next two years to be able to then give us an idea of how we're going to use, what kind of revenues we're going to see from, from that in the future and what kind of expenditures we're going to, how we're going to use that based on the, how the program progresses.
That's right, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the major changes, as you have heard now, are that we have two new funds and that we increased the allocation in the lodging tax fund. And also, we have an update on recreation from our previous presentation that City Manager Knighton has for you.
Thank you. So at a previous meeting when we were talking about the Parks and Recreation Fund, there was a question about the... was a question about the split, the differences between Mount Lake Terrace residents and non-residents who use the recreation programs. I just have a few numbers here for you. For junior kids crew, there are 20 kids and 12 of those are 60% are Mount Lake Terrace residents. For the swim lessons, our non-resident fees are actually about 75% of the total fee from non-residents and only about 25 from residents of our community. And in, and these are all 2023 numbers, by the way. And for drop-in rec, swim lessons, lap lanes, that kind of thing, it's about the same percentage. MLT residents make up about 24% of those fees. So I just wanted to follow up on a question Council had last time.
Mayor Potemwall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for tracking that down. What I'd be interested in is then translating those numbers into budgets, into the budget. And what would it be, what would, what would the numbers be of increasing the non-resident fees, but not the resident fees? To be able to, and or maybe increasing the non-resident fees a little bit more to make up for keeping the resident fees the same? If that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go to the next item.
Okay, we're ready. So we're going to move on to the preliminary review and public hearing on proposed 2025, 2026 final budget. And should I open the public hearing?
Do a presentation first and then open the public hearing?
Okay. Oops.
So the purpose of this, besides the public hearing, is just to give a high-level overview of the process and then to go into the public hearing. Just to let you know that on October 31st, we did put the budget document on the website, city's website. And I'm sure all of you have read it. It's over 300 pages, good bedtime reading. And and just, just to let you know that this budget, 2025 and 2026, is 14% lower than the previous budget. That's the overall with utility funds. And the general fund is 5% lower than it was in the previous budget. So the budget process, it started much earlier than October 3rd, but I pretty much started October 3rd, maybe a month before. But I do understand that the council has been involved. You have set some priorities. The departments have been engaged in the whole process. And also, I believe there was community engagement during the budget process. I believe it started maybe in the spring, in the spring. So on the 3rd of October, we had some revenue estimates that we gave to all of you. It was a preliminary budget was, was published. And then for the next three weeks, we had departmental presentations. And then today, we're at, today, we had the special revenue presentation and today is our first public hearing. Next week, we'll have a presentation on property tax levy. And then on the 21st is the final budget presentation. And we'll include any changes that happen from here till then. And we'll have the second public hearing.
Councilmember Sonmore.
So if there's any changes, can you breadline what's online? Because it's hard to go back and see what's changed and what hasn't.
Yes, absolutely.
Mayor Potemwall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to make a point that I've actually made in years past that, that I'm making now because I'm not going to be here for the, for the meetings. But we should, we should, while we're doing the budget process, so if we look at the timeline, we're adopting the budget and then adopting the property tax increase?
No, so tonight's the first public hearing. Property tax increase will be next week. And then the final and hopeful adoption, we do have a date in December, I believe it's December 5th, if needed. But property tax adoption will be next week. And then on the 21st will be adoption of the final budget.
Okay, so, okay, well, good, thank you. So, but actually, next week, it would be presented, or are we actually going to have a public hearing and adoption? Next week as well, okay?
There will be a public hearing on the property tax. So by law, we need to have one public hearing on the property tax, which will happen next week, and then two public hearings for the budget, which is today and then on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. And so I appreciate that. What we need to be doing, because what I thought I saw, and what has happened sometimes in the past, is we adopt a budget and then adopt the property, the property tax to match the budget. We can't do it that way. We need to adopt the property tax measure before we adopt the budget. So that's, that is the plan then? Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. And the reason property tax should be approved before it because we have to send that to the county by the end of November and to the assessors, to the assessors' office and to the county commission.
Just ask a question.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. And that has always been a sticky subject and a lot of people want us to raise it even higher. But it would be nice to be able to talk about how, how much we're going to affect our neighbors, our residents' budget next year with garbage going up, water's going to be going up. We're going to have to look at a lot of different things. And so it's just something to think about with all the different things that are changing. When is our next study for water and sewer?
Those are just getting underway, so they will be presented to you next year.
When, when was the last time we looked at them?
They, they are about five and six years old.
So we got in trouble quite a few years ago. We didn't look at those at a six-year period, and that's why we had such a huge spike in a lot of different things. So I'm glad we're on top of that.
Okay. So here is just a high-level summary of the 2025 budget. It includes the general fund, the general government funds, and the utility funds and all the capital projects. So it's all summarized on this sheet. If you want the detail, 300 pages of it online. And then we have the 2026 overview also. And I did want to bring up, I know council had some questions in some of our past presentations that we didn't have answers to. One of them was, one of the council members asked about late fees, how much we pay in late fees. For 2024, we have paid $81 in late fees. That's a couple of them, sometimes that happens. I think it's pretty good when we're paying over $11,000 invoices and millions of dollars. So I'm happy to say that it's just $81. And if we do receive any late fees, we, on an invoice, if we see any of them, my staff, they're excellent on calling the vendor and getting those removed. Sometimes it happens, mail comes in late and we still do get invoices by mail. So we're really on top of it. And so I'm happy to report $81. Wish it was zero, but I'll, I'll go with 81. Professional services, that was another question. And I believe all of you have received a list of the professional services amounts and the detail. Believe that.
Mayor Potemwall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you. And did, I know we received this, did we also get, everyone got that other one? But that, this, yeah, this was very helpful. Thank you very much for pulling it together. One of the things I want to highlight in here is the, let's see, what is it called? The criminal justice, public safety costs that is extraordinarily painful. I guess I have to put on my eyes to be able to find the one. Here it is, yeah, the Fund Department Municipal Court. Just want to draw everybody's attention to the costs of criminal justice. And, and it is, it is a constitutional right, I recognize that, and a civil process that we commit to, but it's expensive. And, and it's out of our control in large part. And I just want to point out that we are spending, we are, because of the new public defender costs, those costs are increasing to $500,000 plus per year. And prosecuting costs are $180,000. So we're paying our prosecutors to prosecute those that are allegedly committing crimes. I'm not sure what the legal term, properly legal, accused crimes. And we're, and we're spending two and a half times that to be able to defend those people that have been accused of crimes. It is a, I guess, let me just say that I think it's worth having a work session on the cost of criminal justice and looking at, and having a discussion about how we can improve, make improvements. I mean, there's, the costs are what they are and they're, and we have to budget for them and we, we have to, you know, legally follow the law on how we're doing that and that's what these costs reflect. But there's, there's, you know, some of the things that we should be looking at is, how do we, how do we make, how do we improve the system by getting in front of it, I guess? And, and trying to prevent crimes in the first place? What can we be doing to help society be better, I guess, in the end? But, so anyway, I guess I'd like to see us have a work session on it. I just wanted to call everybody's attention to that now, though, in the budget, because that's, you know, and that's just, that's just part of, I mean, that's just the court system in, you know, in all of this. That's almost $1 million a year in court costs in addition to everything else that we need to deal with, with public safety. So I think it's worth spending some time looking at ways to make things better.
Not to mention jail cost.
Yeah. If I may, Mayor, I just wanted to point out, so we've increased that budget. The new public defense case standards have not been adopted yet by the state Supreme Court, but we were advised by AWC, and I think it's prudent to add those costs into our budget so we're not caught short when and if it does happen. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens, but I wanted to make sure the, the city was prepared to deal with those costs.
But I, I think it's good that Mayor Potem brought this up so that the public, if they're listening in, knows that a lot of the stuff is not under our control.
We will schedule a work session specifically on criminal justice and how that system works.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you for the presentation. I guess not a question so much as a comment, just in case folks are scared by the 300-page budget, I will say the website setup is phenomenal and want to, well, thank you for that and encourage people to take a look because it does a really good job of laying out the meeting timing and what we're doing at each of these meetings, what are the different sections of the budget, that it's, so if you have a particular area of interest, you can go check that out. And so I will say, while it is a lot of information, it is, I think, as digestible as, as a budget can be. And so just want to commend you for the work to get that into a place where people really can go and understand the process and hopefully come and share their thoughts as we're going through this the next couple of meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. It was a big collaboration with several staff members. There was one more comment about some of the questions. Also, I would like to apologize for the general fund presentations. We had an Excel glitch and so we had some errors in it, but they've all been corrected. The tables are in the 300 pages. So my apologies that we didn't review that with a closer, closer look. And also, I know the last two months, staff has engaged with council and had presentations and there have been questions. And we've, we've tried to answer all the questions, but if you have any more questions before the second public hearing, which is on the 21st, please reach out to us and we will get those answered before that public hearing.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to speak for myself, which is what I usually do, but I'm going to pull other people in by implicating myself. So I want to give them a chance to distance themselves afterwards and just address that it's only me talking about me. That said, I just want to make sure our city manager, who's new, or deputy city manager, who's new, and our finance director, who is new, recognize the two main council members asking questions were off of our finance team. And in my six years, they've always been on our finance team. I think it comes up annually, we get a chance to decide who's going to go on these teams. And it's just working out that we've trusted it to be the two of them. So I just want to be as clear as possible that it concerns me that I just learned the finance team is not meeting. I didn't realize that. I just kind of thought that was weird, we don't get those updates. But it wasn't anything that concerned me, which is just my way of saying that the two of them had all the questions and the others remained quiet. Wasn't out of disinterest as much as we were personally, I, my pronouns are we, apologize. Again, distance yourself if you need to. This "we" was learning from these two and trying to piece this together, which is just my way of saying, in the spirit of when you first came on and you realized, hey, we don't have a manual, this seems like the type of thing that we should probably look further into. And I don't know how to put words around that because I'm not even sure what questions I would have had. And I don't know I needed all the questions that I heard, teasing. That was, come on, that was a joke. He didn't even try to laugh on that one. But nonetheless, I just think that was instructive, that we're in this process and I've been here the whole time. So it's not like I'm not understanding, but I do feel like, man, what would have happened if the two of you weren't here tonight? You feel what I'm saying? Like that, that's part is where I'm like, there seems to be something that's, might need to be revisited from a council perspective, which Councilmember Sonmore, I think, has been ringing a bell like that, but today I heard it differently, a different tone. And again, I don't want to bring any of the others with me, I'm just saying, me personally, this was instructive. And so I'm trying to voice my, here was what I just went through. Hopefully, we can learn something from that because I'm going to have to process, why, why didn't I ask a question? So, thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you for pointing that out. So I put a list together of the different things I wanted to go through. And so every night I would look at something for, and I know you guys already do this, but it, it's exactly what you said. If we had some of this already printed out, like in a book or, you know, I love my paper, but it, we used to have finance books and we would periodically go through those and we would train the council on how money is spent, our financial policies, because what Brian just talked about with safety, that's one of our number one financial policies is to protect and enhance that. And I think that would be something that is very well pointed out because, you know, it's a pain to redo this every time and look at all my notes and go back. And then, you know, we always had the books. And so we'd write in the books and we could hand it over to the person with our notes in the book. And it's hard to look at a budget on a piece of paper and then up there. And then when something changes, it's really hard. So there's a lot of moving parts to it. So there's a lot of moving parts to it, and I'm glad you brought that up because there's a lot that we could do. They always have, I think it's in the summertime in Leavenworth, a budget meeting that's really and it's always sunny out, and everybody's walking around, and you're stuck in an air-conditioned room for eight hours for two days. But it it's something that I think it's really good for our city to help educate the council because one of my big concerns reading something was the budget is balanced on the city council's goals. And that, I don't know why, but it just made the hair on the back of my neck stand up. And so I went back and looked at all our previous goals, and that's why I was having a little powwow with Brian before. And I think I want to send a big message on behalf of the council. We if our goals do not stay within budget, we need to know. We're not trying, even though they're council goals, we know if that it's a havoc on the budget, we need to understand that and say that why we can't have it. We have to understand that. And so that's why I wanted to add to our council goals is to make sure that one thing that we have is always protect and enhance our financial health. And the last time we had it on there was about 2018, 19, maybe even a little bit more. But right now, our council goals are grow a vibrant community, responsible, govern to ensure desire of level of service, inform and engage the community, and then environment. And it's probably in goal number two, but I think it's real apparent that the council has this message, and we send it down to the rest of the council after us is that's what we're always trying to do. Because the reason it's so important, if we don't get control over our budget, our residents and our employees are hurt by it. And so we have to start reducing services, and they're still paying the same thing. And so that's why it's so important when we look at our council goals, and I hope the city's doing it, is they're prioritizing that big list they have for each goal. And if it's too much money, we need to know and reprioritize because the last thing I want to do is to have our city goals bankrupt our city. And so it's just really important that we are educated on the budget because we're the one who approves it. And to me, government's kind of changed. It used to be that we'd be educated so much on it, but now I think a lot of way of the future is they give us the information and council, you decide. And so that's why I always tread lightly on some things because I need to understand how it affects our residents. And I know you guys all feel the same way, but I just wanted to point out our council goal. And the reason I keep on bringing up that finance committee is you're right, we haven't done it at all. And I hate signing those expenditures because we used to meet and we'd have a box of all the expenditures, and we'd just pull them out, and we could see what they were for. And our expenditures are quite high. And I think last time I had asked you about that, and it was about $30 million. It's about $1 million every two weeks. And I remember when they used to be about 200,000 every two weeks. And so that's another thing. I'd love to have you guys review the expenditures and see those a little bit more, and maybe that's something that we can work on as a council. And maybe you guys don't need it, maybe just Steve and I do, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we can open. Oh, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you. I did want to make sure I also made very clear, in my six years, this is the clearest I've seen this budget, which I want to applaud you all for doing that work. To your credit, the website, I think, is very helpful. So whoever those decisions were made, these are all kind of separate, but they all kind of coalesce, which is just my way of saying, I think you're doing a wonderful job. And quite frankly, I every so often, the hairs on the back of my neck stack stand up when I think to myself, what if we hadn't changed a couple of years back? Because the stuff that you all have uncovered and corrected has been no less than heroic on some levels is how it feels, especially when you hear a thing might have been out of thing for 12 years or more, and you're like, wait, what? So, thank you for your work.
So with that, can I ask, do we have a balanced budget based on Washington state law?
Yes.
We do.
The budget is balanced.
It is balanced.
It is balanced, yes.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's no further questions, I will be happy to open move to open the public hearing.
Second.
That was the second? So if the move then seconded to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone in the audience that have signed up?
No one has signed up in person. No one has registered to give testimony online, and any comments that have been in writing have been given to council.
Okay. So, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to clarify, we will close the public hearing tonight and then reopen the public hearing in two weeks for final public hearing on the budget and then move towards adoption. But for tonight, since there's nobody signed up to testify or give us any input for tonight, you will have another opportunity and look forward to seeing you in two weeks for any input from the community. But with that, I will move to close the public hearing.
Oh, did you want some discussion before? Can we do that?
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Did we want to reiterate the West Plaza concerns that we already addressed like two weeks ago?
That part of the budget?
Well, no, not well, it's no, I'm on the wrong page. Oh, that's a comp plan. Okay, looking at that. Okay, thank you. Never mind.
All right. So now we're calling for the question.
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since the motion was not seconded, I will reiterate the motion. Oh, you did? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Then we need to vote on it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right, so now we're not doing any more.
Yes.
Does anyone need a break before we go into this? No? All right. So we'll have we'll go on to number seven, which is the review and vote on the water truck replacement proposal with Gary Schmick.
Yes. Good evening, council, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Excuse me. In your package, you have a memo from myself related to the water response truck. So I just wanted to summarize it and then open up for any questions that you have. And just a side note, tomorrow will be my one-month anniversary here, so very excited about that. So we are requesting council to authorize funding and contracting, authority to the city manager to begin acquisition process for the replacement of our water response truck this year. And there are two primary reasons for this request. First, really, the importance for this truck. This is, again, one of the primary focuses, emergencies, to be able to respond anytime, night or day. Besides that, though, this truck does serve to do our basic work of water main repairs, replacements and such, and is used about 80% of the time during the week, not even including emergencies. Question came up about sharing, potential for sharing this piece of equipment with others, but it in this particular case, that's probably not the best business case for it because of the those reasons. But that's something, of course, of sharing of equipment and of services is something, you know, we consider very important and want to work on that as well. The second is the timing of this. While we are, of course, very supportive of electric vehicles, this is not one that that has electric capabilities at this time, and we did reach out to some of the major manufacturers. And with some state legislation that's coming up and going to start on January 1st, we felt it was best to start the process now because if we don't, we we may get into delays of our request because of that. So really want to be clear, though, we're not trying to avoid purchasing of electric vehicle. It's just they're just not available at this time for this, so much of the solid waste vehicles that are just they're coming, but not right now. So with that, open to any questions that you have.
Councilmember Rousonmore.
So more budget questions, and Brian, you're next. But can I ask, do you have a fleet and I know you've only been here a month, but I'm sure it was passed down, a fleet replacement plan because it wasn't budgeted and it looks like in 2024, it was going to be in our 2025, 26 budget? And this is one of those things that come up in the budget. It's $250,000. It's kind of, you know, adds to our budget. So do you have a plan for all the replacements of what you need? Because we used to talk about that a lot. And so was this one a surprise? The existing water truck was replaced in 2022, and I know that they get lots of use in different things like that. But I'm going to be asking more questions about the budget because I want to stay on top of it a little bit more. So I just want to make sure there's a plan in place for all our fleets and they have replacement, and we have those in the 2025, 2026 budget for anything else you may need.
Yeah, let me answer two parts of that. I'm going to defer to Carolyn if she wants to help me out and anything else that I missed. But but first, yes, even though I've only been here a month, we have a very robust replacement plan spreadsheet, asset management spreadsheet that Jeff, our supervisor, provides. And this one is actually a little behind. The replacement schedule was pushed off. I don't know the reasons. It may have been other priorities, but I've been been learning about that and looking to see how detailed of that we have for that, and we do try to stay on schedule. Second part is I and I think Carolyn gave this presentation on the budget, but my understanding that everything that needs to be replaced in 25 and 26, yes, is included in in that budget. But I'm going to look over, Carolyn, and make sure she's shaking her head.
I said that wrong, right? It is in the 25, 26 budget, but you're going to order it in 2024.
Correct. Exactly. Yes. Exactly, exactly. And ordering the and you're going to see us again, I believe, in this. This is for the chassis and the body, and then we actually have to put everything together. So that will be another request.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I in fact, we were just talking, Mayor and I were talking during our monthly meeting with the city manager earlier today about the asset management program and the need for some updated software. Remind me, was that budgeted in in this in our upcoming budget? It is, yes. Yeah, that's what I thought I remember. But yes, so at any rate, there is, in addition to what Councilmember Rousonmore's pointing out, is we do have a need for us to be able to have a clear understanding of assets that we have, when they're going to expire or when we expect them, and be able to translate into into our budget. And so then this is just part of it. We're just needing to move forward with with something that we are is budgeted for next year now because of the need. Correct. And so with that, unless there's any other questions, I'd be happy to. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Then I will put the motion on the table for consideration. We'd like to move to appropriate $250,000 in 2024 and authorize the city manager or designate to purchase the new cab and chassis for the water response truck prior to January 1st,
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. My first time here doing that. Very exciting.
Thank you. Next is the review and the vote on the board, vote on the board and commission's vacancy appointment with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, three appointments tonight, two for the lodging tax advisory committee. We are required to have representatives from lodging establishments on the committee for LTAC for consideration of allocation of funds, a recommendation to allocation of funds to the city council. Those two individuals are representing the Studio 6 Motel, the ownership group, and their names are listed there, Mr. Travis Romine, I believe is how you pronounce it, and Mr. David Cavazos. And the third is we did have a resignation from the planning commission earlier this year, and as a very important commission, we want to make sure that that has representatives, full representation. The individual Cameron Wu that's recommended tonight by the subcommittee did interview as part of the original process back in, I believe it was May of this year, May or June for appointment to the planning commission. There was no spot at that time, but now with the resignation, the subcommittee has recommended Mr. Wu to take that spot. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rousonmore.
Is Bonnie still on the board for the arts? She didn't need to be replaced, I mean, extended?
She was recommended last year.
Oh, good. Okay, perfect.
She was recommended last summer.
Last, oh, good.
No.
All right. Any any Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you. I'll just ask who? Sorry, the planning commission, who was selected? I don't have any background on them.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cameron Wu. He was appointed as part of the salary commission that will be finishing up their recommendation. That'll be coming to council here pretty soon. But that is a very limited-term commission. I think, believe we're going to have a total of six meetings, and then that will end for five years. But when Mr. Wu applied, he applied for the planning commission as his first choice and wasn't appointed because there wasn't a spot at the time. But with the recent resignation, there is now a spot available.
Okay. I think what I'm asking, can I get like broad strokes? Been in the city X number of years, does this for a living, any of that? I don't have any of that detail.
Yeah, and I don't have any of that with me, but I can certainly get it for you.
I I would like to know it.
Did you want a copy of his resume?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yes.
We used to put those in a folder.
Yeah, as I was saying.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. They were part of the packets we looked at back in June and can understand why a refresher would be helpful, so we have those and can send them over.
But if they're in June, it sounds like it might be an email then.
And I can get those for you if you want to hold off on the appointment tonight and make them next time after you've seen the resume. I think that's fine.
We did.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, yeah, I didn't even look on that. I didn't even click on that because we did it. So I kind of knew, and I didn't even look. But usually, we do have the resumes of those that were recommending for appointment available, and so it'd be helpful in the future just that we make that available. And I certainly would encourage us to follow up and get that to everybody. But Cameron, we were very impressed with. We remember from during our interviews previously that a number of people shined brightly, and we were disappointed that we didn't have more positions to be able to fill. So we did be able, we were able to find, place them temporarily in the into the salary commission at the time because we were really excited about a number of people that had applied, and there weren't positions for them on the planning commission or other other areas. So we were happy that we were able to recommend them appoint to their appointment to the salary commission, but primarily because we have a lot of, we were just very impressed with with them and some others as well, and want to get find places to involve them in the city and then look forward to finding opportunities in the future. And this is an opportunity that opened up for us. It was and I wasn't sure if you had asked, who the planning the planning commissioner that resigned or stepping away is Isaac Harrison, who's been a great representative for for our community for a number of years and really sad to see him leave. But we we did have some great applicants for for the planning commission, and we were excited to be able to fill that with with Cameron Wu potentially or recommend his appointment to the planning commission.
And all three on the on the committee were very impressed with him. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. As long as I was going to say, we had a little bit of time. I just pulled it back up since we have looked at it recently again. So Cameron had shared that he is a lifelong real estate professional. He moved to Mountain Lake Terrace about two and a half years ago. He's motivated to improve the city, the schools, the neighborhoods. He has two young kids. He has two young kids, will be part of the school system, plans to live here a long time. He loves living here and is excited about, you know, Link Light Rail coming and, you know, the infrastructure changes that he has seen around town and is excited to be a part of that. So he does a lot of volunteering at his kid's school and is excited to get involved with the city as well. So he was, I think we were, again, very impressed with him when we met with him and think he would bring a really, I think, both involved and engaged and, you know, different perspective to the conversation at the Planning Commission. And so I think we all felt very strongly that he was a good candidate and recommend approval.
Can you humor me? And I don't have it up right now. How many real estate agents do we have on our Planning Commission?
None. That was actually one of the things, yeah, we reviewed current planning commissioners and backgrounds as part of the process because, again, I think it's important to all of us that we have, you know, different represented, different perspectives represented on all of our boards and commissions. And that's something we talk about often in the subcommittee is what representatives do we currently have on those boards and commissions and what are their backgrounds to where we try really hard to ensure that, you know, when we are looking at these things, if possible, we think about how do we include diversity in all sorts of different ways to these boards and commissions.
Councilmember Woodard?
I appreciated the question, Councilmember Sonmore. I'll ask you a different one. This is not a got you, it's just a maybe you already have it, and I'd like to know. Years in the city, I'm always excited to hear when people move to the city and want to get involved. That's a great energy to harness, but I also want to make sure that we're talking about long-term planning, and I'd like to make sure people know what happened 20 years ago, not just in a paper. Do we have that breakdown as well? Do we know that one? And that's, anybody could answer.
I will say, I don't know that we have this, like, exact number of years, but it is something we talk about, and there is a wide variety. I mean, there's folks who have been, you know, in Mount Lake Terrace their entire lives on the Planning Commission, for example, since we just talked about it here recently, who have served on the Planning Commission for, you know, decades. I don't know, 10 plus years, I'll just say, you know, and then we have folks who are, you know, newer, and then we have folks who fall in between. So, yeah, I would say there is also a good representative mix there.
I'll extend my point, and I'm happy to vote tonight.
So, shall I just... Mayor Protam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the city council subcommittee's recommendations as proposed.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council, a couple of things to mention. One, you will be receiving an invitation shortly to a Thanksgiving luncheon with the senior center down at Mickey Corso Clubhouse. So they wanted to extend that invitation to you, and then there are also wider distribution for, I believe there's gonna be an article in MLT News about it, but wanted to make sure I mentioned that here tonight. And we have, I already mentioned the split between the residents and non-residents, so Waste Management is going to be here to talk about some of the challenges that we've had in January next year. So I wanted to update council on that and make sure I mentioned it for the community. We launched the new DaySmart software for the recreation pavilion. Have not heard of any challenges that folks have had. Mostly the changes are on the backend, so we didn't expect that there would be many, but we did want to make sure we mentioned that, and if anybody is having any challenges, please let us know. But so far, that seems to have gone very smoothly. We do have consultants selected, just following up on a question a little bit earlier tonight for both the water and sewer comprehensive plans. So you'll be seeing those relatively soon. And we are going to come to you in a couple of weeks and hopefully get started relatively quickly on the ADA Curb Ramp on 52nd, sorry, 56th and about 224th. That's part of the ARPA spending that council authorized earlier this year. We mentioned we needed to get obligated before the end of the year, so that'll be coming soon, but be happy to see that. Construction take place to shorten the distance for crossing 56th and making it a little more safe for folks trying to get over to the elementary school in the pavilion. With that, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Oh, there are none. Thank you. Okay, so next is the executive session for purposes identified in RCW 42.30.110.
Yep. So what I would suggest, if it's okay with you, Mayor, is we take a five-minute break and start the executive session at, what is that, 8:41? And then I would also like to mention that there is not expected to be action to follow.
All right, thank you.
Oh, sorry, also need to say, we'll have the executive session for 30 minutes, so it'll end at, what would that be, 9:11? I can't do the math. Yeah, and we'll extend if necessary. Thanks.
Executive session has been extended until 9:26.
We're back in session, and no action was taken. So next, we're going to go straight to new business. So does anyone have any new business? Oh, did we want to start on that side? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have this list that I keep as we've been working through these really big, heavy staff-intensive processes, like the comprehensive planning process and budget process. And so now that we're starting to get through some of those, I'd love to circle back to some of the things that we've talked about here over the last four, five, six months, just to start getting them on staff's radar, assuming that there is consensus from my colleagues here. And so one of them is around safety and traffic safety in particular. We've heard some pretty startling and, you know, scary stats, candidly, about the fact that we are at a, you know, 40-year high in traffic-related fatalities in our state. And, you know, I think one of the things we have heard, at least most often during my five years here on council, is folks who have come in, and when we hear from our residents, it's more often than not, it is about speeding, it is about safety in terms of driving, walking, biking, et cetera. And so I really, I think that's an opportunity for us, and I know one that we're gonna do some work on with our active transportation plan. But I think one of the things that we can talk about separate from that, that was very apparent to me as I was driving through Edmonds recently, is they recently implemented traffic enforcement cameras. And so I was driving by one of their schools, happened to be driving during, you know, a time where kids were getting out of school, and I have never seen folks go so slowly down that road, despite the fact that the speed limit is 20 miles an hour when there are children present. I promise you, I've driven down that road many, many times, and that has never been the case. And folks, we're doing the speed limit. Most of our neighbors have implemented traffic enforcement cameras. Lake Forest Park has had a program for a long time. Edmonds started their program earlier this year. Lynwood has had a program for many years. Shoreline is looking at a program that they're gonna revisit and talk about in 2025. So this would, you know, I think, put us in line with some of our other neighbors in terms of steps that we can take to actually look at making meaningful progress in people's behavior to improve the safety of our residents. And so something I'd love to see us do some investigation into in terms of where we might think about putting those, what the options are in terms of, you know, potential partners to source the materials needed for that work, and what a program could potentially look like. And so that is something I'd love to ask staff to put on their list to look into and would appreciate support in getting some more information so we can have a discussion as a council whether or not that's something we want to pursue.
Okay, Mayor Protam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Murray. I couldn't agree more. In fact, I, part of what, you know, I've been hearing a lot about, I mean, we've all been hearing about safe streets and the need for improving safety, and I'm in a lot of my committees, which I'm not gonna be reporting on, but I do want to highlight that, you know, both Puget Sound Regional Council and Snoomish County tomorrow have been looking at, you know, are implementing, are in the process of implementing Safe Streets for All programs that we should be taking a look at here. In fact, if we want to get funding from other sources, you know, safety, equity, and climate are the key things, areas, and I think it's well worth reaching out to Snoomish County and potentially having them come out. Kelly Snyder from the Public Works Department, maybe give a presentation on the Snoomish County Safe Streets, and again, and maybe even from Puget Sound Regional Council, have somebody coming out to give a presentation, because it is fascinating to see, they've got amazing data as to what is causing and a number of different measures that can be taken beyond just, you know, camera. There's amazing technology out there as well. Anyway, I think it's worth having a presentation from others and getting, I want you guys to hear what I'm hearing and see what amazing information is out there and data that's available and plans that can be taken, that we can be taking a look at and figure out how we can improve safety here in our community. So absolutely agree.
Okay, anyone else? You have more?
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I will take another brief moment, another amazing stat. I mean, I'd love to go on and on about the, you know, the regional planning and growth and all those different issues that I hear about from the Puget Sound Regional Council. I just wanted to highlight one really quickly, which is, over the last 20-year period, I don't know what it is here in Mount Lake Terrace, but in Puget Sound region, 98, get your heads around this, in the last 20 years, 98% of the growth is people of color. I'd be really curious to see what it is here in Mount Lake Terrace, but I thought that was fascinating. 98% of the growth that's coming to the Puget Sound region is people of color, which gets back to the importance of us recognizing, appreciating, and celebrating diversity and understanding different cultures. And these cultures that we are welcoming into our community, it's a great opportunity to learn more about our neighbors.
Can I ask a specific question? Are you saying, and I'm not trying to be anything, 2% that people that are living in Washington State are Caucasian, or Caucasian?
In the Puget Sound region, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I was just, yeah.
I'm understanding the stats.
It is fascinating. I thought, that's, that's, yeah. Anyway, I thought that was fascinating information that you might want to be aware of. I won't go into more detail on that, but I would, one other thing I would like to make sure I'm, highlight is the General Assembly for Snoomish County tomorrow, which is December 11th in Everett, I'm sorry, in Muckelteo, sorry, in Muckelteo, from 5:00 to 8:00-ish. And the key topic there is gonna be really the scope of work of Snoomish County tomorrow and the opportunity to, as I've been mentioning, we are looking at what was set up initially as a growth management planning organization within the county to be able to review and understand the growth that's coming and how we're going to deal with the growth in Snoomish County. We've been looking at expanding the scope to other areas where we may be able to, may want to look into more detail. And that's where, we're looking for your feedback and ideas as to how do we want to shape the future of Snoomish County in other areas beyond just planning? Do we want to look at, some of the examples that I'm really interested in pursuing is, and I know that you guys are interested in these topics, is affordable housing. And remember, there is this 0.1% sales tax being collected at the county level to address affordable housing issues. How is that being spent? How are we distributing those funds? How is that helping our region, our city? And so maybe there's an opportunity, since that is county-wide organization, you know, the county is managing those funds, maybe there's an opportunity for cities to have a little more influence. Another area is substance abuse and mental health, another topic that we've been very concerned about. Again, the county is collecting funds, but we have no influence as cities as to how they're spending those dollars. Is there an opportunity for Snoomish County tomorrow to be engaging and influencing the direction of how we're utilizing those dollars? Health, healthcare, we used to have a health board that has been absorbed by the county. So there's another issue that we are no longer having any particular influence, it's being controlled by the county. How can cities have influence and be working on health issues? So there's just some examples, and there's, I'm sure many, many more out there, but this is our opportunity as cities to weigh in on the direction, the future direction of Snoomish County tomorrow. And so I encourage as many of you as possible to attend that, if you can, and be ready to have that conversation. We're looking forward to your input. Thank you.
What, was that date again, in December?
December 11th.
At 5:00?
Yeah, from 5:30 to 8:00 in Muckelteo.
Rose Hill.
Rose Hill.
Yeah, Rose Hill. I think that's the thing I'm interested in.
Yes.
Yeah. Did you, Councilmember Woodard?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We got six minutes before we have to expand, so I'm only gonna take five of them. Really, I just wanted to say to the public, we have forsaken the council reports because we didn't want to put you through six weeks of talking about what we've been doing, which is unfortunate because it's been an awesome six weeks. So I encourage you to look up those notes whenever we get them to the city clerk, and she'll get those published. Where I was really going with that is I refuse, especially in this context, not to acknowledge at least one thing, and I can tie it into new business that you just set me up nicely for. I want to personally say thank you to the mayor, Mayor Protam, and several of our DEI commissioners, Scott and William in particular, for having the courage and foresight to meet with one of those very communities that we were just hearing and making up that 98%. I'm gonna pause and just say, I think 98% when you say is of color, is probably also including Ukrainians coming into the areas, a lot of the international folks, this is a refuge city, and so I think probably a lot of that growth is also tied into that. But nonetheless, the talk that they went and did where I'm giving them the kudos was with the West, the Washington West African Center, Wawa Center. Amazing work that they're doing, I won't put you through all of that. Instead, I will just, in the spirit of future business, point out that on the 9th, so two days before Snoomish County's towns and city come together, the Wawa Center, hopefully you've gotten an invite, I've gotten in several ways, they have been working with U-Dub and another partner, but I think it's just U-Dub is the main partner, with this idea of a futuristic African village, if I'm saying that correctly. I might not be, but nonetheless, they have a event coming up where they're inviting the community in to come and learn, and they held our feet to the fire, the council, during that session, about what can we do to be more inviting? And they did give us kudos, beginning with our DEIC in particular, you know, the work that the city is already doing, but they were really looking for more investment. So this seems like this might be a good opportunity. If it isn't already in your calendars, I'll make sure you get a copy of it, because like I said, they've been sending it out far and wide, and it is in December, so you have time for it to run up on you. But December 9th, they have open house with U-Dub. And again, thank you to the mayor, Mayor Protam, and our DEIC.
Well, I just have two things. The next Monday is November 11th Veterans Day, and Terrace Plaza, Mount Lake Plaza, has asked me to come and speak at that, at around 2:00. And then I took a land use class, and because all the land is already being taken up, that almost every land that is being looked at now has wetlands on it. So if you're gonna be doing anything, any development at all in Snoomish County, you're gonna have to deal with all of these wetland things that's gonna be coming up. I thought that was an interesting thing. I thought that was an interesting thing. Mike Appleby was the one that taught that. And that's it. I will save everything else for next week. Anyone else? We're at new business. We're going to do the council liaison reports later. So if there's anything else going on, nobody's saying anything, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.